Hi everybody.
Yeah.
Okay, we are.
So good, alright. I will call the meeting to order, roll call please.
Mary Fino?
Here.
Mr. Amelie is absent, Mr. McGrady?
Here.
Mr. McQueen?
Here.
Mr. Barrow?
Here.
Mr. Ruse?
He's up there.
That's how they call him. Mr. Ruse?
Yes, I'm here, just sore throat, so I'm remote today.
Mrs. Mara?
Yes.
Notice of this meeting was provided as the Burnsville News and Courier News file with the municipal clerk and posted on the municipal bulletin board on December fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. Please stand and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the body of the United States of America and to the sovereign states, the Constitution, under its will, with the great justice for all.
Okay, welcome to the January twenty-second, twenty twenty-four meeting of the Burnsville Borough Council. This meeting is being conducted in person in council chambers in Borough Hall, and it is being broadcast live on YouTube and on Zoom to make it as convenient as possible for residents to attend the meeting. Members of the public who are here in person and those attending remotely on Zoom will be given the opportunity to comment at appropriate times during the meeting in accordance with the following guidelines. Members of the public will be allowed to speak during the open sessions and during formal public hearings on the agenda, including public hearings on ordinances. Comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker, which will be monitored and enforced by the Borough Clerk. Comments containing offensive, profane, or indecent language or language constituting hate speech will not be permitted. Remote participants will be muted unless they are unmuted by the clerk, and remote participants will not be able to unmute themselves. The clerk will mute remote speakers at the expiration of their three minutes of allotted time or if they make any inappropriate or offensive comments. All speakers, whether in person or on Zoom, shall state their names and addresses before making their comments. Speakers on Zoom shall activate their camera so that they can be seen by members of the governing body and audience. Failure of the governing body to provide a live broadcast of this meeting or technological problems encountered during the course of the meeting that affect remote viewing and/or participation will not invalidate this meeting or any action taken, including but not limited to the adoption of any ordinance, resolution, or motion. Alright, we have two presentations tonight. We have Main Street Burnsville. I know as you recall, when you signed the contract with Main Street, part of what's required is that they do an annual report. And so I believe you all got one in your packet. And Olivia is just gonna give us the highlights.
Highlights. Hi.
Hi, I love you, I love you.
Hi, happy new year.
Happy new year.
Good to see you. Um. Yeah, roll, rotate. Uh, scroll all the way up. There, there. Oh, um, I just told Charlie I'm gonna be repetitive, but twenty twenty-three was a bit of a weird year. Um, it was great, we had a lot of wonderful things going on. We had some, uh, things happening that we didn't anticipate the outcomes, but, um, as they say, what doesn't kill you or doesn't hurt you makes you stronger. So, um, we're looking ahead to twenty twenty-four quite a bit, and we've learned quite a bit in twenty-three, uh, which we'll go over now. And a lot of these are just highlights from the year and from our events and, um, our, our, um, experience at the conference and a number of other things that occurred this year as well. So, really excited to kind of review it all and share it with you. So, uh, Anthony, next, please. I have a little time around here for myself, so I don't go over, so we can all have a nice quiet night. Um, so just tonight, we're just gonna review just some really basic things. I will have the full annual report up for the entire public to view, um, on the website as well. Um, but this is just, again, some highlights of, of, uh, what our teams have worked on throughout the year. Um, and then we'll go into a little bit more of our goals and our transformation, uh, strategy, and a little bit of a summary of what we're going to be doing in the next couple of months and what that will lead to moving forward. And then, uh, projected budget and general idea of kind of what we're starting to work with, which will, we'll talk about and we'll be moving and shaking it in the next couple of months with our strategies working forward. Next, please. Uh, our design team has been very busy this year. Um, as you all know, the historical walking tour has been a project they've been working on quite significantly. Um, and last year was a, a lot of time was spent by the team connecting with all of the businesses and the property owners of all the locations where the markers would be placed. Uh, we got a hundred percent of everyone, uh, involved on board with doing this, and not just on board, but excited about it. So we're really, really thrilled with that connection. Um, right now, we're in some of these sort of nitty gritty historical information accuracy moments. Um, it has been with our local historians. However, Somerset County, as a result of the grant we received last year, is requiring reviewing the content as well. So it's gonna take a hot second, but the, uh, goal at this point is to make sure it's open for our actual centennial date, which is, um, April twenty-fourth of this year. So that is our goal, to have it, uh, installed and good to go. We will be doing some fun grand opening events around that. We're working with haunted history on doing some tours, um, and a number of other fun things to make it more than just a couple of hours and cutting a ribbon.
There are ten markers, is that?
There are ten specific locations, and there will be one main marker that'll highlight, oh, pretty much everything and, um, a little bit larger than the others. But yes, there are ten locations. Uh, we do have two extra locations that, uh, we can consider, and if there ends up being more than the budget, we can add two more. But there's a lot more that we can add to it moving forward. And we're not limiting it by putting numbers on them or, you know, anything that's, you know, pigeonholing it into just ten sites. Um, so we'll be able to expand on it moving forward as it, as it's warranted. Um, but we've certainly, you know, spent some money on it, and it has been completely grant funded up until this point. Um, we do have a little bit of remaining balance, which we'll be covering with some sponsorships and potentially more grant funding as it may be needed. Uh, but as of right now, nothing is gonna be due for anything until April, whatever things sort of paid out to date. So we're, we're good to go on that front, we're just waiting on making sure that all of the information is there. Um, so, all in all, doing well on that. And again, our design team has been working really hard on that project, so kudos to all of them for all the work they did last year, it's all on that. Um, as many of you know, some of you may not, we did upgrade the banner system, um, on the poles. It is an automated system, uh, which is all great. And the one stipulation we contacted the company was that the banner banners would fit. Didn't, so, that was fun. Um, so the company did well by us, and they printed new ones just because the timing was really short and tight, but we realized that they were really small. So we are evaluating the idea of a larger system. Our board has approved moving to the larger system, the printing cost is not very large. Uh, or sorry, I've been told, I'm waiting on numbers from the manufacturer on that. But the larger system is, it fits right into place where the, uh, pole is. The banners don't have to be that large size, but we at least have the flexibility of being able to use whatever size we want. Um, and if we do end up using that full size, it actually, you know, doing a mock-up of it, it doesn't actually look overwhelming, so they'll actually be really nice for our verification efforts. If we wanted to do weight finding signage, you're limited by the fact that we can't install signs, being that I'm onto it too. Um, you know, that, this will be a really great way to be able to put weight finding in place as well. So at least it gives us the flexibility to move forward. Um, but that is, uh, a number for what the banner, as well as printing the banners, costs and that twelve thousand dollar number, and it was partially grant funded as well, and the rest came from our general fund. Um, so, really excited about having a, a schedule coming up for this year. We're gonna be working on the centennial banners as well, which is very exciting. Um, so we're looking forward to that, moving forward. Um, many folks don't actually know, but we did help support Friends Revenant Burnsville last year. We did pay for all of the watering that they conducted. We didn't actually schedule it or do any of that, and Friends did all the actual work itself. Um, we just simply paid them. Um, so we did support them last year. Unfortunately, the baskets did come down a little early. Weather was specterous last summer, um, but we were there to assist. Um, and we did do the tree pit maintenance as well with all of that and some of the meeting earlier in the year. And that's shifted a little bit, new position that was made available, uh, towards the end of the season. So, um, I'll be talking, connecting with you guys about what to do with all of that moving forward. But, um, we're really glad that we were able to support and help the friends.
American Water Company charges just thirty-eight hundred bucks for water for that square?
Uh, it's all the hanging baskets, and it's the planters, I believe, by the train station. I never remember exactly which planters are the hares, uh, but they do the, you know, the independent, the larger thing.
They must do some kind of a service, they're not talking about the water out of this bucket, right? Well, they are.
Uh, no, it's, it's, yeah, it's, yeah, they, you know.
They truck with the tank.
I don't know, I've seen, I think someone was doing it, I don't remember.
They was around with a tank.
Yeah, they walk around, they go around in a big truck with the water. And yes, it is quite costly, it's not a small thing. Uh, okay. Moving into our Economic Vitality team, so at the very beginning of last year, I feel like it seemed like forever ago, but it was actually the beginning of last year, the, um, the printed map was made available, and all of our advertisers and everything were, were thrilled with copies of that. A copy went out in our appeal letter last year, so everybody in Burnsville received one. Um, so we were really excited about that. They were distributed to a number of hotels, uh, and attractions in the area. Our A B two, uh, took a lot of copies out and distributed it.
Do we have them downstairs in the rack?
We did.
I think so.
Yeah.
Good.
Yes, um, yeah, it's maybe due to start replenishing some of those locations. So we're, um, we're really excited about it, and it's a really great tool to, you know, let other folks know we're out and about the borough since. Um, of course, we spent quite a bit of time last year working on our suburban district project, and we all know the outcome of that. However, we did do a lot of outreach with our local business community. We did like four in-person events, three mailings, um, and a number of other, uh, items as well, social media, et cetera. So we did spend a lot of time last year working on that project, um, up until the fall. Um, of course, our Burnsville Bucks is still live and rolling. Um, honestly, we should have put quite a bit more promotion into that program, and that is one of our goals for this year, is putting a little bit more promotion into our Burnsville Bucks program. We did a little bit of that last, um, the, the Valentine's holiday season and promoting some of our Burnsville Bucks businesses with video and content that City Life's done, I guess, too. An interesting thing that Economic Vitality did, um, was, uh, uh, an Instagram pilot series for Valentine's Day last year, which we're gonna be doing a little bit of again this year in conjunction with having ladies' night, um, which is more obviously in person. But doing a special feature like this is something that we never actually did before in promoting our local business community, and we got a really great response from it. A lot of people were engaged online, um, and we heard from some of our local businesses that they actually got business as a result of people seeing this on social media. So it was a really great way for us to be able to engage with the business community and then help promote them as well, at no cost to anyone, really. Um, so it was a really nice promotion, we were good to do. Please. The big one was the launch, or the soft launch, I should say, of the Discover Burnsville app. Um, it is live on Apple and Google, depending on the device you use, and it is still in its beta form, we'll call it. Um, there's a lot of content that still needs to be added to it. Our businesses, we encourage them to sign up to participate and have their listing on there, um, just because we wanna make sure that whoever's on there knows that they're there and they are actively interested and a part of it. Um, but the main purpose of this app was to work in conjunction with the history tour, which, the app is GeoTrack, which means if you are in the middle of Burnsville and you're standing in front of a building that looks old, and you're like, oh, I wonder what's up with that building? You look it up, you don't have to download the app, there's actually a web version as well. You stand right in front of that building, and it'll tell you what building is in front of you. And then if you click next, it'll tell you what building to which direction is next. Um, so that was the purpose of getting this up, and then we realized there was so much more that you could also do with it. So all of the parking locations are there currently. Um, obviously, that's an image of our fall holiday events. Um, but the events are there as well with clickable links to be able to access tickets or other things that are involved with the events. And also for our businesses, you can click links, um, to get to business websites, send an email, et cetera.
What is the name of the app?
Discover Burnsville.
Discover.
That B with the underline is the, with the app that's up, looks like.
Do we have it on our website?
I don't think so, we should advertise it.
And I, I haven't heard anything of it, I think it's brilliant idea, did you program it yourself, or?
Uh, yes, it's a plug and play, uh, feature, so thankfully I didn't have to do a lot of.
Is it plugged into the site, so if you change the site, the app changes with it?
Yeah, it's all. All.
Yeah, we should have been on the, on our website.
It should be on the website, you should probably put it.
There's a couple hundred downloads already, which is great. I, I have, it's been a soft launch just to sort of work out the kinks, so we haven't done a huge push for it, um, because there's always kinks in technology.
Are you considering local businesses be able to put events on there as well?
Uh, they would have to send it to us, but yes.
Like David Burke was doing something, or the theater, could they sell tickets through your app?
Um, they don't necessarily sell the tickets through here, they would give me a link, and then the link goes to wherever, you know, whatever website, but it should be a very simple process. Um, there's, there's plenty of features. I actually mentioned that, uh, with Diane, who was working on the trails committee, there is an option to be able to put a trails map and include those as well.
Most needs to understand what you're gonna have.
Fair enough, thank you. Um, it is all free, there are no in-app purchases or any of that. Um, I mean, at least not yet, until somebody comes up with a great idea for us to be able to fundraise. Uh, but there are sponsorship opportunities, so businesses certainly can sponsor the app, and then it just, you know, helps what the after of the year. Um, so it was really cool, it definitely took some time. We had an intern this summer, which was the most fabulous thing, I want more interns. We have internships available. Um, I love how our, our internation was phenomenal, um, and she helped with the content as well. So it, it, it took a minute, but it's there. So that one was a, a really big one, and this was not just a Economic Vitality project. Obviously, the, the, um, design team worked on it as well with the history content and then the other elements to our promotions team, so really great components of program.
And how many downloads, so you had, you had a couple hundred?
I haven't checked recently, the last time I checked, it read like a hundred and seventy-something. Um, so I'm sure it's just slowly trickling without, without promoting.
Plan to, sorry, this is, you know, you've done, you've got things that I do. So you're planning to put all restaurants on here, you're gonna have a reservation link to open table?
I would love to. Um, as of right now, I am hesitant with getting everyone on there just automatically. In the past, I've had a business or two, eventually they didn't like that.
The idea of having a nap hub for our county joint.
Good, thanks.
I love that.
There's tons you could do.
Design team, check.
We're always looking for volunteers.
Um.
Well, it's a great promotional tool as well, you know, and the idea is to get as much at the forefront of the community as possible at your fingertips, and again, you don't have to download it, there is an option for just being on a website, um, so you can access the information.
Are you pushing notifications out of it too, as well?
Am I pushing what?
Are you even pushing notifications as well out of this yet, or no?
Um, I don't know if it does that, I don't know the functionality of that.
Most would have it built in.
They do.
So if I have the app, you can, you can tell me about everything I wanna know about everything in Burnsville.
Yes, but there is a, when you go into settings, there's a refresh app option where you may have to physically do it versus.
People can't resist the little red dot.
I'll have to see their functionality and how far they can go with that, but I wouldn't hold up a check.
Wouldn't it make sense if the walking tours, if you're gonna notify somebody that the walking tour is near you, it would have to.
There's all kinds of things.
You do have to open, you have to open the tour for it to tell you where, where it, where you are. Okay, so it's not that it pings you and tells you you're there, it's when you open it, it says, oh, you're standing in front of the old library, history, photos, all that stuff. And then next for the next stop on the west. So I don't, I don't love the pings, but I'm sure they're always updating, so. Really, really, uh, restaurant.
Hey, it's a start.
It's for sure.
Hey, that's our beta. Be back as, welcome, across the board. Any questions so far? Any more? Of course, promotions team working on our events for the year. Um, like I said at the beginning, it was a weird year. Um, and I actually, uh, calmed myself down a little bit in talking to my counterparts in other towns. Or there, it's been weird for them too. Uh, Cranford does the haunted history event, uh, just like us, and they're obviously with their history. Um, and I spoke with Karen, and she said, what are your sales like? And I said, oh, not great. She's like, oh, mine are not great either, and we ended up selling the exact same amount of tickets. So, wasn't just us. Um, so, you know, events were down, there were three events that we canceled as a result of attendance being so low. Um, our, our bulk outing, it was the five K as well, attendance was, I was very surprised at low registration. Um, and then I remember Miss Street and I were going to cancel those three events this year. So not really a fan of canceling events, but sometimes you lose more by keeping them on. Uh, and yes, that is my son pushing his power wheels into place with my younger son, and he can't resist that thought. Uh, but all in all, the events that we did, uh, they were great. Ladies' Night was a phenomenal hit despite the fact that it was the end of July, um, and a million degrees, and, um, usually no one's around, but we had seventy-five of our tickets sold, and I know that there were more ladies out there shopping and enjoying that didn't necessarily buy a ticket, which you don't have to do, um, so that was really great. So, and of course, our parade was, I was shocked, it was double probably quantity of people that attended this year, and that likely because we were able to help with our sports teams and honor our sports teams for all their accomplishments this year, so it was really great too. Um, and having a bar at an event is a really great idea, just saying. That went, that went over really well.
Olivia, with the Cranford tour thing, was it their second year also?
Yes. Yeah.
That might have something to do with it.
Um, Woodbridge has been doing it for fifteen, fifteen years?
Well, we go once, and you have. It's been fifteen, Woodbridge?
Woodbridge has been doing it for fifteen years. Um, we switched up the, the route last year, and then this year, there are gonna be new stories. Can't really change histories, it's hard for a lot of the stories to change, or work with some new actors as well. So sometimes it's a little bit different. Um, but this year, there's been some new content, so we're hoping to push a lot of that. Um, and because it's our centennial year, we may be focusing a lot more on the speakeasy concept, which I know, but Jane with Haunted History is really excited about doing a lot of speakeasy things this year, so, just randomly. So, you know, we, we may kind of shift that aspect of it. But if Woodbridge has been doing it for fifteen years, there's something that we said about, you know, it just being consistent and continuing on. And, and even she said that they were a little bit dumb this year too, so. It's, um, it's not isolated to us. Next, please. Um, I will tell anyone willing to listen that when you decide to rebrand your company, it is very challenging in a number of ways. Uh, but also, when you're doing it for good reason, uh, it makes sense, and you just have to be patient with it, right? Um, so we did, we did do the rebrand as a result of attempting to be more inclusive. Um, a lot of folks said that downtown was one-sided town, downtown was off that square area. Uh, no, downtown's the whole canvas for the work concerned, so switching to Main Street was just, it was the most logic thing to do. Um, so we did that starting in August, it took certainly almost a long time. Uh, website was new as a result, and, you know, switching things over took some time. But ultimately, I'm finally starting to see the shift in response from people that they're understanding the difference, some people still don't like downtown, that's okay. Um, not gonna, not gonna shun you for saying that, it's all good. Um, but just over time, it'll, it'll take a little bit more time for us to be a full, understood as Main Street. Um, so that, that took a hot second last fall. Um, we also did something sort of in the shadows, um, nothing really major, just to see if there would be a response. Uh, there's the share the hype logo at the top. This is something we learned about when we were at the conference in March last year. Um, it was a town in Georgia, Macon, Macon? I don't even know how to say it.
Mason.
Mason? Not Mason?
Mania.
Macon? And bacon? That makes sense, because you actually smell it like bacon with a pen.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, and they have this concept of having a hype team, which essentially is an ambassador program, uh, with T-shirts and swag and a whole bit. They even have a really cute aspect of a little hype house, uh, so there's like a little boggie bandana, it's one of them. And they get folks to walk around town and share the excitement and the love and all the wonderful things that is in their town. Um, so I just created a little thing, I made some stickers, I made some magnets, and I just put them out when we had events, just to see if people would take it, or if they would ask, and they did. They took them, they said, what's this about? I'm like, oh, you know, we're Burnsville, wanna share the love, and oh, this is awesome. And they just took the magnets and they went up to wherever. Um, so, uh, stay tuned for that, because we will be developing some sort of ambassador program moving forward. I have a lot of people asking about volunteering, but not being able to devote time for meetings and doing a lot of things. So hype team is a really great place where you just put on your swag, go to the farmer market for an hour, and you just say, hey, here's some fun swag, here, take a pen, here, take a, take a, you know, whatever. Do you have questions about what we're doing in Burnsville?
Yeah.
I got my mains.
There you go, see? A really good pen, actually. Um, so we're really, we're really looking forward to creating more of, of that ambassador set of programs moving forward. Okay, Anthony next, so we can wrap up as much as possible here. Uh, I just left this list here, I'm not gonna go through the whole thing, um, but we were able to have some great connections with a lot of different organizations. We sponsored the Ball Club last year, which we're looking forward to doing again this year. Um, you know, working with the Borough on the Centennial Loco Contest, um, working with the Burnsville News on their holiday, and turned a number of other things. So, um, we're, we're really focused quite a lot on those, those relationships and working together with, um, organizations. And I am so excited to break the barrier with New Jersey Transit this year, um, and they have still continued to reach out to me.
So what barrier do you break, is you're, you're?
Just getting them to respond.
Okay.
Well, not only are they responding, but they keep following up with me.
Okay.
Versus us always trying to chase them.
Uh, New Jersey Transit's a giant.
They are, they are.
I have different words, but I chose to keep them silent.
As far as the verification component goes, they're very responsive, so we're really excited about that.
Depends on what department you're dealing with.
We have a, we have a good one so far, so I'm gonna, I'm going to roll that one. It was a tough, tough crack.
Stick with it.
And we did it, so, um, and then our fundraising, uh, we did, we did okay, considering there were two things that we worked towards last year that we did not receive. Um, the T-Mobile hometown grab we did not receive, and of course, the urban district we were looking for as well. But despite that, we were able to raise some, some funds to help pay for our events and our app and all the other items that we see on the list so far.
And congrats on the forty under forty.
Oh, thanks. Technically.
Just made it.
Technically. They made, they messed up with the cutoff date, but we're not gonna talk about it, don't punish them.
All right.
Did, did you get your axe in the target?
No, I'm terrible at that, but it was fun.
I couldn't do it either. They had an, an event for all the forty under forty, a thank you at the Hatchet House.
Yes, it was, uh, end of last week, it was a networking event that they all invited us to, and it was great. I met a couple folks from Arrow Lynch, which was pretty awesome.
Basically, you just say you slid in for that.
There was also karaoke there, and they made me say, anyway, moving on. Uh, so twenty twenty-three was great, it was weird, we had a lot of lessons learned, successes, failures, you name it, but that's the nature of life, you forget business and all that as well. Um, so now we're looking towards the future. So twenty twenty-four, focusing right now, um, in the next three months specifically, on this phase one and phase two of a transformation strategy plan in October. I also went out to Washington State, um, where Main Street America was holding a, um, our workshop in, uh, specifically researching two towns out there, one that had fifteen hundred, a Main Street town that had fifteen hundred people, and then Vancouver, Washington, which is, I don't know how many people, a lot more than that, in the tens of thousands. Um, and then just understanding what they're all doing in their, their different phases and understanding the concept of a transformation strategy, which I had known previously, but this really immersed me a lot more into the topic. Um, so what we're working on right now, and many of you hopefully have seen it, we have our survey, community survey out again, we did this a few years back, but it's always good to refresh. Um, the community survey will close at the end of the month, and we will be focusing on, uh, trying to understand the priorities of the community, what their pain points are, and really listening to our community in that process. We'll also be gathering, uh, some more number data, uh, not just demographics, but shopper data. Um, I don't know, have I maybe heard of Placer AI?
Yes.
I know you have, because I was talking about it.
That's Nancy.
You have as well. Uh, we may be able to actually get it inserted with brands, so. Um, Placer AI is a fairly new, it's been around for a few years, but it's a fairly new version of bringing cell phone location data. Um, it does not get personal information or any of that, but it helps track where folks are coming from, how long they're staying here, where they're going next, why they leave town, why they come here. Um, we can pinpoint to a very specific business and say, hey, business, you had a million people walk through your door this year. Um, and it's, it's accurate information, so. Um, Main Street America is actually helping us with this part of the, uh, strategy plan and gathering all of that data, and one of the records that it is, is coming out from Chicago to Burnsville to help us gather all of this data, disseminate information from the survey, um, work with some focus groups and do a number of, I'll mention that on the next slide as well, a number of other elements that we're going to put together a strategy based on all of this information to tell us what we're going to be doing for the next three to five years. I mean.
One question?
Yeah.
So you get data in aggregate about traffic in variety ways. Does it link to other third-party databases in regards to things like demographic income?
Yes, um, specifically for Placer, it's proprietary, so I don't know what third parties are, Yes, um, specifically for Placer, it's proprietary, so I don't know what third parties are, but they, um, they do use that as part of gathering their data.
Interaction.
Yeah, it's, it's actually, I'm not doing it justice right now and we don't have time to talk about it.
Um, we can talk privately.
But it's, it's really, it's really cool. And as a marketing data nerd, like I'm in love with it.
And if they ask, if they have the ability to compare aggr- in an aggregate to other communities of like size, that could be a huge thing for businesses to grow, so.
A hundred percent, yeah. And in New Jersey and all of, we can really do it in more of. Um, so ultimately we will be creating this roadmap of what our projects are going to be, what our future business support or events and any other programming. You know, if we decide that a car show is not really appropriate when we have a million boutiques and salons in town, then we maybe won't do the car show anymore. You know, that's what this information is going to help, uh, let us know. Or because the community loves the car show, we'll keep it on anyway because it's a community thing. You know, whatever, whatever the answer will be from that. And then phase two is going to go hand in hand with phase one, but it's gonna work on, uh, all getting those detailed plans, being specific down to the tasks, what they're due, how much things cost. Um, gathering a stronger volunteer program, getting more volunteers to join and support. Um, and really getting the, the program that we've already started and set a foundation for, really rolling on a much larger scale.
When you speak to them, can you ask if they can advertise direct? AKA the same way that Amazon does based on your web traffic. These systems exist. So if you have the ability through geotracking to push somebody into a certain boutique just because they happen to be in town. The technology.
I didn't look at it that way, but yeah.
The technology exists and I'm guessing he was company.
Placer's more on the gathering of the data, not so much the pushing of you to do X, Y, or Z. Um, so they'll, they'll tell you more of a story based on what you see versus them making me be able to do something as a result of it. You choose to do the things as a result of the data that you find independently of that company. If that exists.
Hmm? No, these things aren't, they all exist. You just gotta figure out which company you're working.
Yeah, no, uh, I believe that, yeah, this one is not. Next please. Um, and so the, the tasks that we're doing, like I mentioned already, you know, we're doing the survey now, we're doing the data gathering. Um, we'll be working on some focus groups sometime in February. We'll have another big idea session where the community will directly, um, be able to share their ideas. We'll, we'll do sort of a Main Street mock-up in a way, or we'll kind of break people up into groups of different uh, teams and they'll come up with ideas and all of that. And then once we gather all of this information together, we'll be able to build a really strong strategy for the next three to five years. Um, and then of course phase two is going to include, you know, developing our volunteer program a little bit more. Um, and obviously having some work for the session so that you can get more folks on board. Any questions or anything? Okay, last but not least. Honey, yay. Um, so to be frank, we have never actually, um, put together a budget in this format before. Um, this is somewhat new for us because we've never really known what we were doing previously. You know, we would come up with some ideas for projects and events and we would execute them and, and do them as we could and gather funding for them along the way, or maybe we would find a grant and say, well, what can we do with this grant? And then we create the project and, you know, there would be some sort of format. Um, so we've never really understood that until this year. Um, we are very, very, very happy to report that Main Street New Jersey is, this past year their grant was twenty-seven thousand dollars, but for twenty twenty-four it's going to be a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, um, again, grants are mostly for programming, so we can't really use it for overhead costs or at least that's what, um, I have been aware of up until this point. They haven't released their information exactly on what's going on with it, so that may change. If it does, cool, that's awesome. But, uh, for now, let's roll with the idea that grants don't cover overheads for the most part. Um, so, uh, in addition to that, I'm, you know, hoping that we have some really solid programming, a budgeted amount for, for our programming throughout the year. And then obviously our office expenses, hiring somebody in the office. Um, because this really isn't a one-person job. At minimum, it should be one and a half people, two. Um, and, and really having some folks that we can rely on in the office as well. Whether it's me, someone else, both of us, whatever the case may be. Um, so that's really what we're, we're focusing on moving forward. Can these numbers change? Will these numbers change? Absolutely, especially depending on our strategy and what we come up with. As I mentioned in the last two slides, uh, our program services numbers may change. Um, you know, maybe economic vitality needs to be forty, promotions needs to be twenty or whatever the case may be. Things will shift as, as needed. Um, so with that, um, we, up until this point, over the last three years, the Borough has kindly provided twelve thousand dollars for us each year, um, seven over each year in the agreement for those three years. And now I'm back to see if we could do some more. Um, and yes, uh, we obviously were asked for more because they've been stagnant numbers over the last three years. They weren't incrementally growing. Things change and we want to do more. Um, so we are asking for fifty to start, fifty thousand. If the Borough would be willing to do so, I know this is a conversation, this is not a, I'm having an answer tonight, so I know this is a thing. Um, but that's where we would love to start if that's something that the Borough would be willing to do with us.
So the big projects for you next year, you talked about two phases. Do you have other capital? And or, capital's not the right word, um. So you outlined projects with budget in the beginning that you did last year. Do you have a similar plan for, for this year?
That's what the strategy plan is going to tell us. Um, and that strategy plan will be complete by March. Um, so we'll, we'll be able to tell you exactly what, what the plan is because we don't want to just, what we've been doing previously is just, you know, let's, let's get more people in the town. So we focus on this concept of tourism and, you know, restaurants and dining experiences to get folks to come in, which is where the history tour came, came from and where restaurant week came through and, and all of that, right? Those focused on that kind of strategy, but that doesn't necessarily mean that's the right thing for us to be focusing on. You know, three, three years from now, we'll probably do this again and determine that there's something new. Or if not, maybe it's just keep rolling with what we're doing. Um, but the idea is to really get a comprehensive look at what the community needs, what we want. Uh, in- independent of, of redevelopment, obviously, you know, those, those things are still occurring and we'll work with whatever, whatever that is entailing over the next few years, but programming needs to occur whether that's happening or not. Um, so it's, it's really important that this, this follows through whatever, it's economic development at its finest. So, um, it's important that whatever we choose to do, make it happen.
Yes.
The survey is great. Have you gotten a good feedback on it, like response?
I have posted it once on social media and I sent it once in an email. And we have a hundred and ten responses so far. Um, we have a postcard ready to go to all the mailboxes and we'll obviously be continuing to do more of a push. I actually will be at the farmer market on Saturday um, to encourage folks to answer the survey. I actually will have a big um, poster or source where people can put the stickers on it and just sort of engage a little bit more as well. So we'll encourage people to come to the farmer's market if they're not already to be able to answer it there as well. And we have extra questions for people to take too. So, yeah.
The survey is very thorough.
Uh, that was, that was supported by Main Street America as well.
Yeah, it's good.
Um, National has had their eyes on us for some time because I keep being really loud at all of the national events I go on and saying, because New Jersey's program is just not as strong as it could be. Um, and so they're listening, so. I'm really excited about that. Yeah, maybe here. Question?
Anybody else? Questions?
Just, it's excellent. Great presentation and really kudos to you and the committee and the board and all the great work this year. Um, and setting this up for day twenty-four. So thanks for the great support.
Thank you. Thanks.
Yeah, very well done. Anybody else? No, no.
He wants to talk shop.
Oh, I, sorry.
We need to, we need to talk together.
Yeah.
About all that technical stuff.
Best we'll talk shop.
Talk shop.
Well, so, just like, I think I've always been skeptical about how much value downtown might have a tangible brain.
Main Street Burnsville.
Sorry. To, to the businesses. However, technology platforms like that could have a disruptive return.
Uh, yes, it's one of many things, right? Like a marketing strategy, you can't just do one advertisement and think that you're gonna get a whole bunch of business. You have to do multiple things to generate business, right?
But the hardest thing is knowing where your customers.
Yes, especially for someone like us because technically, and I hate it, I cringe when I say it, everyone is our market. I think that's like the worst thing. But this entire town is our market and then we're also trying to engage visitors, right? We're trying to get folks to come in from our town. So that's where having different types of events comes into play because you're appealing to different markets.
Yeah.
Um, and then your, um, your business community is obviously very important. So having a fashion show is going to make more sense with all the boutiques we have in town.
Well, so I, I just quickly looked at the website while you were talking. I have a feeling that they may have that ability. So for example, if we could measure foot traffic that is demographic that would shop at a boutique.
Yes. It's true.
And also market to them through, like either data JSON, the main JSON place.
Uh, Placer AI is expensive.
Yeah.
Um, to be able to access on a regular basis. I'm hoping that with our grant from Main Street this year, that we will be able to use funding to be able to at least access it for the next year. And obviously we'd love to continue with that and make that.
Interesting.
Um, yeah, I've, I've deployed about twenty thousand dollars for the year to be able to access Placer Gold. Uh, data is.
Very, yeah.
Well, I thought you were gonna say data is the only thing that's relevant.
No, no, it's again, it's a piece of the pot. People are relevant. That's, and that's the thing, people are relevant and that's the most important thing for us.
You have to find them to get to them.
Yeah. So far, so good.
Yeah. All right. Thank you. Thank you. Yes, well done.
Thank you.
And next, we have our chief. He's gonna give us an update on the, uh, cameras, the, uh, that's license plate readers.
Sure. I'm glad you said update. You said presentation earlier.
Oh, I'm sorry, no.
Then again, you said forty-five minutes combined, right? So she used forty.
I'm sorry.
I'm waiting here to please farmer's marketing.
Well, that's our hundred, you know, just like, dude, we're getting new patches soon.
Yeah.
Um, I stood here, uh, about a month ago, we talked about rising car thefts, um, and what, you know, what, what can we do about it? Um, from our perspective, from the, from the police department's side, we knew, um, manpower wise, we don't have a lot of officers here. We don't have a lot of officers who work a night shift, but how can you better deploy, uh, make a difference in some neighborhoods that were seeing a rise? Um, and I think Councilman Rivera can probably attest that we put some good efforts into an area that was getting particularly hard. And I think we made a difference. Um, there's some folks there that experienced a little anxiety and I think it was our responsibility to try to allay that, uh, anxiety. And I think we did a good job, um, the extra trolls that we put in those areas. Going forward though, I think we talked about, uh, the license plate readers and to try to get a little update where we're at, um, um, and talking to the mayor recently. The mayor's, I think the mayor's group's wanted the area chiefs to get together and I think that's probably the best way for us to go forward is try to be uh, on the same page as the area towns as far as what type of license plate readers we're getting, where are we deploying them? We, I don't think we can share the cost. I think the cost is gonna be our own to share. Um, but where we can share with the other towns is being on the, with the same vendor, we can share information and share it instantaneously. Um, and I think that's the best thing we can do as a group, the consensus we're coming to, and that's talking to the chief of Burners Township, uh, Ben Muster, Far Hills, P-Pac, um, just the area chiefs here to see what, you know, what they're gonna do, what we're gonna do. I know Burners Township is making a very, very strong and served effort to put, um, somewhere between ten and twenty license plate readers, um, uh, in their town. That's only gonna help us, especially if we partner with the same vendor they are. Um, we've already talked myself and Chief Burger, um, about sharing that, those alerts when they come up. Um, I think we talked about how this happens, but um, if we're lucky enough for a stolen car to come to town and get that alert, it's gonna be instantaneous. So, um, we share a large order with Burners Township. So to be able to, um, share with them is certainly gonna help. How do we do this? I think buying it was one way, um, leasing it was another. I believe, uh, looking into it, the leasing program probably is the best way to go with these cameras right now because we don't see a real big difference, um, than what we're paying for. We know it's just a tool, a tool belt, so it's not gonna, um, solve things a hundred percent, but I think it's gonna make a difference. Um, whether we start out with three cameras or four cameras, um, I think it's gonna make a little bit of difference, um. Where we put them Charlie, I know you had that question for me. I'm not gonna divulge it now, but
It's secret.
I don't think it's ever been a secret.
It's out of the world.
That's one thing I came to, you know, I, when you asked that question in the email, I said to myself, I don't really want to tell them right now. By the end of the day, that camera's gonna be so obvious to everybody, it's gonna be public. So, um, once we determine, uh, where they go, I think everybody's gonna see them eventually to realize.
It's one thing if it's me driving around the same road, it's some different, if it's some other dude just read Charles Payton.
Yeah, you know, you don't, right? Um, but I think the obvious areas are the inroads of the town. Um, just to get people coming into town, um, with this, with this technology. Um, apparently the state highway is a little challenging right now, so we're probably gonna focus on the county roads and the local roads as opposed to using the state highway. Um, I don't know this to be fact, but I was told, um, by somebody very reliable at the prosecutor's office that the state is about to um, put a big influx of money onto the, into the state highways, um, with a large outlay of license plate reader cameras all over the state. Don't know how long that project's gonna take and I, I think if you're, if you're right about it, you might want to see if somebody down there will talk about it. I know they passed the big budget number in twenty-two for a large outlay of license plate readers in the state. Um, so I don't know where they are with that project, um, but I think that'd be helpful to us too because we'll be able to partner on that.
If, if somebody drives into town with a license plate that comes up as stolen, is that sufficient for a stop or do you have to find another distraction?
No, that's perfectly sufficient. And I think what, what we're finding out is those alerts, whether um, we have our alerts come to the computers in officers' cars or to our desks, we're both think those alerts will be instantaneous. Um, as we talked about in the past, the cameras are, are only as good as um, what the bad guy's driving or, or who's registered in that car. If it's not a stolen car or it was just stolen in another jurisdiction, not important stolen, it's not gonna help us. Um, but um, I know, I don't know if anybody had a chance to read it, but I passed on some information from, um, the watch on Chief recently. Chief Andrew, again, he did a nice description of their experience with a certain vendor, um, one that we are considering. And it's only about seven months into this program and he's, he's had a significant reduction in, uh, burglaries and auto thefts in his town just from implementing five or six cameras in your town. And they're looking to do a couple more right now. So, um, he said the experience he's had has been great with it. Um, he finds his officers materially helpful, uh, to do their, to do their job, to have those instantaneous alerts. So, um, like I said, it's not gonna solve every problem, but I think it's gonna make a difference. And I think starting out, what we talked about, whether it's, you know, three cameras or four cameras or something to that effect, it's certainly gonna make a difference. Um, where we put them, um, in addition to roads is a little challenging, the power and the solar. So it should determine where we want them and can we, we don't have an existing hole, we might have to pay a little extra to put a hole in, but.
Are they easier to relocate if we determine that different?
Yeah, there's a fee that goes with the relocation. I mean, it I think it was like seven hundred and fifty bucks to relocate if you decide that's not working. But I don't, you know, I don't think of something as better somewhere else. I don't, I didn't think it was such a nice, that I would stack for sure, you know? Um, yeah, I know, I think, uh, we're moving forward and, and however the council decides, um, you know, let me know and we'll, we'll certainly move forward with the project.
Let me just decide.
I think the, the good part about leasing too is the technology changes so fast that you will always have updated cameras rather than buying them and then having to.
Yeah. The one specific vendor we're, we're focusing on, uh, that we're talking to a lot, um, is, it seems like their technology is far ahead of everybody else's right now, so, you know, hopefully, uh, they stick with it and they keep, uh, producing. Yeah. And I know, you know, a lot of these, uh, you buy them, I don't know, it's an outlay twenty, thirty, forty, fifty thousand dollars for a bunch of cameras and you don't get any impact on it. It's probably not the way we want to come right off of that. We try to keep it low and I think, you know, we'll see if they're, they seem to get their money's worth, then we can, we can make a different decision later on.
Yeah.
Um, just three comments first of all. I'm glad, really glad you passed on the information. I know it was interesting to see it, but Councilman Amberline asked the last time if we had any tangible examples of it actually in practice, so it was really helpful to see that. Absolutely. The neighborhood I live in was very grateful for the, um, uh, tick up of police presence. I also know, um, Sergeant Richards came by and met with the community, um, met with a lot of, uh, homeowners there. Um, you know, offered support from police, how to reach out, sort of, uh, I would say quasi neighborhood watch, but maybe not official. Um, and, uh, and I think they were just grateful for the attention of the police department, so thank you. And I've been really, um, it's been really great to work with you and Nancy on this project and the members of council. I do think that this would make a big difference and I'm really grateful you moved so quickly over the holidays and all to take a look at this and work with the other, um, chiefs in the area too. Um, I'd be interested in trying to expedite it as quickly as possible. I mean, the cost for three was roughly nine thousand plus the installation fee. I believe it was underneath ten K.
We should give ourselves a little cushion, you know, just to make sure, you know, we have to put up a hole or something or we're paying the utility company to help us up the power. I mean, just have a little cushion, but, you know, whether that's ten or twelve or whatever it is, I think it's gonna be fine.
Now we have Jack, this is probably just a resolution. Is this?
But it's just, you know, I don't think we have to, actually, do we have to, it may not be part of the budget, put it in the budget.
It's just being a budget.
It depends when you want.
But the problem is the budget doesn't get passed until.
Oh, you want it right now.
So if you want to do it, we have to amend temporary budget, probably, I'll talk to the lady. I don't think we have anything in there that could be used for that, and so we could do it the next meeting.
Just three weeks too long? I mean, I guess by the time you, like, I, I'm just concerned that it's next month. And then you put the order in, then it may be two or three months before it's actually here, you know?
Yeah, I think the one vendor, and I'm sure they're all the same, they told me about eight weeks out, once you commit, and now it's supposed to be eight weeks out.
Right, so I mean, I don't know if they're gonna wait three more months.
I'm sure, and if it was operating temporary budget, it probably runs, because we can always amend that to the next.
Right.
So if you want to go ahead and order.
Okay. And you don't need a resolution or anything? We can just go ahead and give the thumbs up?
I guess, I don't know, this is the Jack question. I guess based on the orders that you're introducing tonight, I think I can approve it.
That's right.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, I, I agree.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Excellent.
Okay.
With the ordering.
Thank you so much, Chief. Like, you feel really great about the staff and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's your tool.
Let's get where it goes, right? It's definitely a good tool, like, technology, you can't run away from. I mean, it's gonna be helpful and uh, we're vested.
Thank you.
Let, let, let us know how we'll approach it all over with the coin.
Well, you know, that's interesting, because that's why, one of the, one of the things Chief Vanderly from Watchon, when um I asked him, you know, he he was able to provide a lot of statistics, he said, but you know, it's interesting, I don't have everything, because we've only been doing it for seven months, but he plans on, once the year goes by, I think in June or so, he says he's gonna, he's gonna do a whole um spreadsheet on the difference it's made in how many car stops he's had out of it, and how many crimes they've stopped, so I think it's, you know, both come up, which are pretty numbers. Talked to, you know, Warren, the same thing, um, they believe they had about a fifteen percent reduction in, in uh auto thefts um since the implementation of their cameras, so it's making a difference.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, and I think it'll make a difference to your, your, awesome.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you, alright, appreciate your hand.
Yeah. Good night, thank you. Alright, we have minutes to approve, November thirteenth, November twenty-seventh, December eleventh, and December twenty-sixth. Do you have a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Alright, fine.
opposed? Okay. Um, we now have our first open session for any items not listed for a public hearing. Anyone in the public wish to be heard? Yes, Erin?
Hi, uh, Erin Duff, fifty-one, Crutsey Drive. Uh, I have a few questions about the um proposed uh affordable housing payment and lieu ordinance um that's being introduced tonight. Was discussed during the uh, the last work session, just that's the question that came up. That ordinance that's being amended was originally passed in twenty eighteen um to implement obligations that the borough undertook as part of its um settlement of its third round for housing obligations with the Fair Share Housing Center. Um, essentially, it undertook to pass certain zoning ordinances um to fair share satisfaction that would stimulate affordable housing construction in the borough. Based on that settlement agreement, went to court, got it done, and it was opposed. So my first question is, in so much as this new um ordinance amends that, does the borough intend on providing that um to Fair Share and, and the court um to assure itself that it's not in violation of settlement agreement, not jeopardizing this judgment of the proposed pursuant to its uh, its um. Uh, second, the uh amendment impacts the rounding formula that's in the statute, that's in the uh current ordinance. So the, it's uh, the amendment, the uh proposed amendment cites um the co-regulations that are incorporated by reference into the statute um that allows for payments in lieu. And that's founded NJAC five ninety-seven. Subsection six point four provides that ordinances may allow the developer the option of making a payment in lieu of providing a whole of fractional affordable units required by the zoning, subject to the following. Uh, subsection one, payments in lieu of constructing affordable units may represent fractional affordable units. The affordable housing requirement shall not be rounded. So, not, not the clearest regulation I've ever read, but I think the universal interpretation of that has been that your payments in lieu can, can um take into consideration fractional units, happy, you know, okay, I'll take half of my unit-based payment, but your four-labbed set of that's cannot. Which is why your ordinance, that was approved by Fair Share in twenty eighteen, and every other ordinance that I found in any municipality in New Jersey, when you're talking about set aside, unit number set aside, they need to um be whole numbers. So if you have any um percentage uh of set aside uh calculation that results in a fraction, um they need to provide units at the next whole number. Um, so I would look uh into that and see if there's any authority that the uh municipal attorney can find that would justify or any other ordinance in this county allows for rounding down affordable set-aside. Um, finally, the uh, there was discussion that while this only applies to um smaller last question, um, smaller uh developments, residential developments, um that the borough had some authority to um essentially to disregard, I guess, the mandatory set-aside language in the ordinance and allow for payments in lieu with respect to larger developments, residential developments. Uh, and I was, you know, also just curious as to where the authority um where that comes from. Um, you know, whether it's statutory, whether it's in the code, um or elsewhere. Where it applies to the larger um developments that aren't captured like this uh amendment.
Thank you, Erin.
I, I can answer those questions, Mayor. Can you hear me? Thanks, you can't, can't see me, but there's a good reason for that. Uh, first, uh, just by way of background, there, there really is no authority to put, as in time, the uh co-rule expired years ago now. Uh, so the courts say just look to the co-rules for guidance. Secondly, the, this ordinance, any units that it provided were above and beyond uh the township's fair share obligation. So it was really a voluntary ordinance. Third, with respect to the uh amount, uh, as, as Mr. Duff said, that was set by the old co-rule, but the uh a, as to the rounding, there is no rule cook uh in, in place at the present time. So, w- we just felt that it was impractical to require small developments, ten or fewer units, to provide affordable housing on-site. It, it's very difficult to do. Uh, with respect to the rounding rule, uh, we did discuss making it fractional, and we could still do that. Uh, but the way it was written before was it always got rounded up. Uh, which in the case of some small developments, like a, you know, an eight-unit development, uh, became very unfair. Uh, because fifteen percent was one point two, rounded up was two. So if you had an eight-unit development, you ended up having to provide twenty-five percent uh set aside instead of fifteen percent set aside. So that's the rationale behind the ordinance. Uh, there's no specific legal authority, uh, but I think it's in keeping with the spirit of Mount Laurel III.
Thank you, Jack.
At the end of the day, there's gonna become a date when they tell us how much more or less we have to do.
Well, there's a, there's a bill pending in the legislature now, which the rumor is it's gonna be adopted by the end of February. It, it's a terrible bill. It, it looks like it was written by Fair Share Housing. It was released in the middle of the night, immediately sent to committee. Uh, so I know the league is fighting it. Uh, the old uh moribund uh consortium has been fighting it with their leftover funds. So we'll see what happens, but it, it's not, it's not very favorable to municipalities, it's not really a fair bill.
Alright, uh, anyone else from the public wish to be heard? No? Yeah, I can't see there. Doesn't look like, okay. Um, and I will close the public hearing. Alright, um, we have an introduction of ordinances. Um, this is twenty twenty-four nineteen eighty-nine, so let's see, construction code fees, Chad, why don't you do that?
Sure. A move ordinance twenty twenty-four nineteen eighty-nine, ordinance concerning construction code fees and amending chapter twelve of Borough Code entitled Building and Housing be introduced by title passed on first reading, published according to law, and that a public hearing be scheduled for a meeting beginning seven PM Monday, February twenty-sixth, twenty-fourth.
Second. All in favor? You're opposed? Alright, moving on to answers.
I move that ordinance twenty twenty-four dash nineteen ninety, an ordinance concerning affordable housing set aside and supplementing and amending article thirteen of the Borough Land Development Regulations entitled Affordable Housing be introduced by title passed on first reading, published according to law, and that a public hearing be scheduled for a meeting beginning at seven PM Monday, February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four.
Certainly. All in favor?
Hi.
Reposed? Um, good, how did it actually?
I move that ordinance twenty twenty-four nineteen ninety-one. Sorry? An ordinance concerning towing contractors and many, article three of the Borough Code entitled Police Regulations be introduced by title passed on first reading, published according to law, and a public hearing be scheduled for a meeting beginning at seven PM Mondays, February twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four.
Second. All in favor?
Hi.
They're opposed? Alright, Tina, make the last one.
I move that ordinance twenty twenty-four dash nineteen ninety-two, an ordinance concerning the qualified purchasing agent's responsibilities and amending article three of the Borough Code entitled Administration, introduced by title, passed on first reading, published according to law, and that a public hearing be scheduled for a meeting beginning at seven PM Monday, February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Any opposed? None. Alright, moving on to resolutions, we have twenty-four twenty-three to twenty-four thirty-five, and I think we have two more at the end, actually, thirty-seven. Uh, because these two, the last two, thirty-six and thirty-seven, uh, we did not discuss at the work meeting, but they're pretty standard. Uh, we had just overlooked this, Leo, the Saint Louis, that they had requested it, but we didn't.
Have it on.
Haven't done, well, they pay for it, so, um, and then we needed another labor person for public work, so they're pretty standard. Uh, I think all the rest we discussed at the work meeting, so if someone would like to move them?
I move that resolution's twenty-four twenty-three to twenty-four thirty-seven to adopt it.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Just reading?
Yes.
This is the clean?
Yes.
It's the narrow?
Yes.
It's the rules?
Yes.
Move the map?
Yes.
Okay. Um, mayor's report, um, since we last met, well, had our first, our public meeting, um, I've done two weddings. Uh, I actually did married Andy at the coffee shop, in the coffee shop, it was really nice. Uh, we cleaned up the reeds from Reeds Across America. We had a Main Street board meeting where we kind of reviewed this whole year-end summary. Um, Nancy and I met with Chris Schmidt, who is now the new president of the Law Enforcement Foundation. Um, just to go over how they can purchase things and what kinds of things they're looking for, and we are so grateful for that organization, they have really been raising a lot of money and doing a lot of good things for our officers, so. And then I had a, a county stigma free meeting on the nineteenth. Just a reminder, Thursday, next Thursday, no. This Thursday, one fifteen, no. It's last today. No, it's two fifteen, I'm sorry, it's two fifteen. For those that want to, um, you probably got the invitation to the Somerset County Governing Officials Association. And actually, this is a brand-new place, I just saw they're doing a ribbon putting there in Raritan, so if you wanna try a new restaurant, and uh I forget who they have as the speaker, but they always have a good.
Craig Vaughn. Craig Vaughn, he's the administrator and examiner. He's gonna talk about elected officials' responsibilities.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah, they always have good programs. Um, and then a reminder, the mini golf on February third at the library, I got my tickets, don't forget to sign up, it's really, if you've never been, it's, it's a lot of fun, so highly recommended. Um, that's it for me. Administrator? Oh, yeah. Yes, well, I'm also appointing the um advisory committee, and actually I had one more person to add on there. Jim Sasso wanted to be on. So can we add him? And we have not, I mean, we haven't scheduled our first meeting of the year yet, so we need to do that. Just wanna check on people's availability. Okay.
Okay. Um, I just wanted to answer some questions that some of you had at the last meeting that I get back to on. There are no personal signs up in the train station.
Just a picture.
Yeah. Yeah. Pay by phone, they're both green and white and black, so, don't do me. Somebody had asked about Audi, um, there is electricity, but no heat. And I asked about the danger of, you know, frozen pipes, but there's no water in the pipes, so ancient, great. Um, and you asked about maintenance there, and uh, DPW pulled weeds. Make sure that it's been varged, they cleared the sidewalk, there was snow, and they applied. And then you would ask about the um status of boiling terrace and the new engineer signed up for the class that the federal government requires you to take, and um you asked about the status of the bid for um the pavilion, and that is supposed to go out around the end of February. So then work would begin, beginning, or at some point in May. But um, there's some things we need to work out with the timing of when the work will be done, day versus night, things like that, so I think the bid will go out as an alternate for all the work during the day or work at night, like how much extra that would cost. And then inside, if you wanna spend extra money to have the work done at night, is that running through here with school, if we do it during school time, or the use of the pool? It's better than this municipal place, yeah. And then, um, I think those are the questions that we've had that I need to get back to on. And then I just wanted to mention, so that you know, uh, this train station waiting area um is closed to the public because two portions of the ceiling fell, and actually there was one of the bench, the bench, you know, the big long bench that's there, I'm not sure if it's Ben, the bench, but
I think it's the original bench.
Original bench, and it, it broke the bench. So fortunately, I know we were sitting there at the time. Because of the weather last couple of weeks, DPW has not been able to get in and do any temporary fixes, but they, we are not gonna expedite repairing because we recognize it's cold out and people are seeking a place to stay when they're waiting for trains. Um, so, uh, you know, John's looking to get a contract there and there to do something short-term, then we have to talk longer term about the replacement room.
Remind me who's responsible for.
Yeah, I know, Jack, is that um us or is that New Jersey Transit?
If it's structural, I would like to New Jersey Transit.
Yeah.
No, they're uh, for the temporary, um, you know, kind of short, they're looking to us to do that.
Right, but if we replace the room.
To replace the roof itself.
That would be.
I think that, that's them, right, Jack?
I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, um.
Unless they wanna bargain and give us the transition.
We, we've tried that, I'm not sure why they won't, but.
Yeah.
It'd be the best, we're all involved.
Negotiate.
Yeah, check your contact.
We'll keep trying.
Will they give us the building to get out of our way for?
Yep, we'll, we'll keep trying.
Alright, thank you. Um, do you have a motion to accept the monthly reports we had, you know, package?
I'll move, uh, second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Wow. Um, have we had any committee meetings? Public safety? We did meet in the public safety, we talked about the. Budget time?
We did, not the chair anymore.
Oh, that's right.
But, um.
Yeah.
It's Jack, Jason.
But Jay's not here.
Yeah, I mean, so we met, um, I think we have a really interesting path and good path to a budget that involves, I don't wanna reveal the punchlines.
We're getting close to revealing to council, right? And is that fair to say?
Yeah. Yeah, um, I'm actually gonna have more information on Wednesday, so.
We have a meeting on Wednesday?
No, we don't have a meeting, but I'm gonna give some more information on the issue of the budget.
Ah, that's great, that's an important data. But if there's a path, there's a good path, I think we've taken a slightly different approach. Kudos to Nancy, she's done a fantastic job on the internals, and bless her, you're welcome, so.
Excellent. Uh, personnel, we have not met. Yeah, um, public works, I'm not on it anymore. Public works has not met, we don't even have a schedule actually yet.
Well, yeah, I was talking to um Christine earlier, we're looking at the second two things, so I just have to check with Tony and John, make sure, and, well, the rest of the members, and who's on.
Do we want to, I'm just saying again, the way we've changed our structure of meetings is to have the committee meetings before our work meetings, so if there's an issue that comes up at the committee meeting, we can discuss it at work, and then if we need to take action. Rather than having them after this meeting or.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the second, if they're the second.
It used to be the third two things.
Right.
So if you meet the second, then we can discuss.
Second, you go a month, then we discuss the third.
And we don't need a room, because it's Zoom.
No.
Yeah, we do those things, okay, that makes sense. Um, any other liaison reports, I don't know if everybody's kicked in their meetings yet.
No, I mean, we had a meeting for planning board, unfortunately, um, I'm gonna talk about something, because, like, I'm gonna go through pretty much tough patchwork, so I've been traveling four nights a week for things, things, buildings, and things, so I'm gonna do my best.
Anybody else? Board of health, we did a board of health thing. Put in the new president, secretary, they do, updated. Madame Francine back in as president secretary. And that, yeah, pretty uneventful otherwise. Okay. Um, we talked about the contract. And then we, oh, and we got it covered, we'll report it then. Um, we don't have any correspondence, we do have, um, just under unfinished business, um, last at a work meeting, we had a request from Harrington to use the lot across the street. We asked them to check first with Far Hills, since they're, most of the work will be in Far Hills. Um, they did, and there is no space available where they can keep their dirt or whatever they want to put. Um, so I would recommend that we allow them to do this while it's still available, at some point it won't be, but while it is.
So this is a Far Hills project?
No, it's actually two oh two, they'll be coming up two oh two, so.
The majority is in Far Hills, we asked them to go to Far Hills first, again, we did.
Yeah.
Far Hills didn't have a spot for them, how, what's the length of time again?
Three weeks.
Oh.
Yeah.
I'm totally, so, yeah.
I'm okay with that.
It was a port of the check, but.
Yeah.
We want to be good neighbors.
Yeah. That's, well, maybe we weren't the one that's helping. Yeah, thank you, we're good. Okay. Um, any new business? I don't think we have any new business. But we do have another open session, so if anyone didn't get a chance earlier, um, that would like to speak on a subject. See none, I will close the public session. Um, we do have uh, contract negotiations to discuss in closed session.
I I also have two items to discuss briefly, Mayor, the train station sublease and two sixty-one claremont.
Ah, okay.
I'll be brief.
You always are. I have a motion for executive.
I'll move to the second session.
All in favor?
Hi.
All right.
We're not coming out, right?
No, we don't have to come back, so, um, thank you all for being here, thank you those that were on Zoom.